I called the order of the Littleton City Council meeting in June tenth two thousand nineteen. Standby for this call or roll.
Yandello.
Here.
Boggo.
Present.
Jaworski.
And.
Koski.
Excused.
Levon.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Soloto.
Here.
Approve of council minutes.
I'd like to excuse Councilman Sackus for voting on the minutes of May twentieth two thousand nineteen.
Approved by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Boggo to allow Councilman Sackus from abstaining from the vote on council minutes of May twentieth two thousand nineteen. Discussion. Standby for this call or roll.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Soloto.
Yes.
Councilman Bialo.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to approve council minutes from the May twentieth two thousand nineteen meeting.
Second.
Approved by Councilman Bialo, seconded by Councilman Soloto to approve the council meeting minutes of May twentieth two thousand nineteen. Discussion. Standby for this call or roll.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Same.
Soloto.
Yes.
The Board of Communications of the Mayor, City Director.
Yes, good evening, everybody, thank you, Mr. President. Kimmel is behind on pickup last week or so, and I was out of town for a couple days last week, so I just got the message from Don Johnson, who's the representative, and it's a bit frustrating because he told me how the warmer weather and people cleaning up the garages contribute to them getting behind, which is the same story we were told last year when this happened. Called him back and told him to rent more trucks, hire more drivers, and do whatever they have to do, this shouldn't be a surprise each year, and I know most of the time they're spot on, but still this shouldn't be happening on an annual basis. As time goes on, of course, I got his message, but I will continue to follow up. He said they should be caught back up this week, so let everyone know that it should be this week, they should be caught back up. But again, hopefully it's not going to keep happening as time goes on. Today we want to call you pool tomorrow with Service Director to assess repairs in short term and long term, continuing discussions with the school board as they prepare for the levy and land assessments of the elementary and middle school, should the levy pass, what the plans are for those properties. That is all I have tonight.
Any questions for the council, through the Mayor, City Director?
Thank you, Mayor. The Director of Law is excused. I have no communications, so if there are amendments or additions to the agenda, is anybody in?
Councilman Sackus.
I would like to put on our new business A, Kimmel pickup garbage delays.
They will add Kimmel pickup garbage delays to new business by the way. Any other additions or amendments to the agenda? Seeing them on to Minister here, please Chief Ice.
Thank you, Mr. President, a couple of things, a few things that have happened since last time you met. Got a council to be aware of, additional amendments to the report. There's a bank run where the mayor last week and they got on the freeway coming to West Palm. Two of our officers deployed stop sticks and flattened the tires, and then we assisted the mayor, or not the mayor, who will be able to some of our officers making the rest of the person around the back, and I don't need your company. We had two overdose vests this last time you met, twenty-one-year-old female and sixty-five-year-old male. And I report back quite often that there's a number of houses that we keep an eye on that we haven't reported drug activity at. Right now it's around thirty houses that we're looking at, and last week we made traffic arrests at Regent, one out on Regent, and one on Phillips, three arrests of two people out of both those, each of those home for traffic. Daryl Jones, if you guys remember, he was the fellow that robbed the Quality Inn twice. This is all within a two-month period, and Grant Sanoco, he went to trial and was convicted and he was given a twelve-year prison sentence. We're currently investigating him, and made an arrest of for a fifty-six-year-old male for boresome involving a sixteen-year-old niece. And then off the gas on the newspaper, he recovered a stolen handgun from a vehicle on traffic, stopped like he had, and got we stopped, took the handgun through the back, right next to a one-year-old child. This guy had a whole bunch of gun convictions in the past, so the federal government is actually going to take control of that case of prosecution as a federal level. And that's all I ever have for this year.
Any questions for Councilor Bush? Thank you, Chief Ice. Mayor Chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. As you were, it's indicated in my report, we've had a rough time with our Engine Two and our ladder truck. Finally, we got both from back, they all been repaired. And as I've said before, corrosion is our worst enemy at the fire department, and we're having some significant problems with now the ladder truck and the pump and some corrosion. And mind you that we do significant amount of preventive maintenance on these vehicles all the time, but we're getting through it. Hydrant flushing is continuing through the city. We assisted a city engineer with a survey for a water main test for a grant submission. And then we're in desperate need of a new station generator. Our generators become unreliable, we've had a person out to evaluate it, and it's concerning to me is because it is unreliable, we can't get calls, our phones don't work with the generator, it doesn't kick on. We've lost power twice in the last two weeks. Additionally, it'll take twelve weeks if we order today just to get the unit in, let alone have it installed. So we're looking at mid-October, even if we ordered it, if you gave authorization, could probably order it till the end of June here and get one. So what I'd like to ask for consideration tonight, if the council's willing, that you allow the Service Director, probably the city engineer, maybe Mr. Yandello to help me out in preparing something for you for next council meeting, so I can get an ordinance to purchase a new generator. We're looking at about thirty-four thousand dollars just for the initial purchase, and then there's some cost associated with the installation, and that could run anywhere between ten and fifteen thousand. That's all I have, Mr. Council President.
Any questions for the council, through the Board of Directors? Councilman Jaworski.
Chief, we're specifically looking at this generator, is this going to be a diesel generator or something that would be running on natural gas?
Well, we can go both. That's a tough question, but the problem is that I have to run about a hundred and fifty-foot gas line, but I think in long and with the recommendation of Ron Strauss, he'd really like to see us go natural gas, and I would prefer that also, but we have to run a line through our parking lot, and if we do it just right, we can actually fix our parking lot at the same time, which is falling apart too, but we're more, right now, we're inclined to go. The difference between the diesel and the natural gas is only six hundred dollars, which I was surprised at. If we go natural gas, I don't think we have to replace our pad that we set it on. If we go in new diesel, I think we have to extend it by about four. So I would prefer to go natural gas, and that's the recommendation from the Service Department, and certainly it's long-lasting, you don't have to run out, we don't have to worry about diesel going bad, so there's a lot of good reasons why go for natural gas.
Completely agree with you, Chief, on that. I'll be happy to make a motion to allow the Fire Chief and the Service Director, whoever else they deem necessary, to investigate and report back to council on a new generator.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Soloto to authorize the Fire Chief and the Service Director and the city engineer to investigate purchasing a generator for the fire station. And the table law director will create an ordinance for purchase at the next council meeting. Discussion, Councilman Boggo.
Yes, so what size is there?
It's a hundred KW, it's the same size as we have right now.
End of the discussion. Standby for this call or roll.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Soloto.
Yes.
Any other questions for Councilor Mayor Chief? Senator Chief Powers. Finance Director Dolez is excused, city engineer for Mika.
Thank you, Council President, one thing to add to my written report. Last week, Mr. Sack and I met with the representative, representative of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers based on a complaint at Lloyd Court about wetlands. We met with the representative and the current property owner, developer, over there, and he looked things over and saw no issues. There are wetlands, obvious, seems like in the back there, but were the building pad, the future building pads were, were the drains and everything else, he had no issues, and he was going to send a letter to us to that effect, so all is good. That concludes my report, thank you.
Any questions for the council, the city engineer, Councilman Bialo.
So, thank you, Council President. So the current state with the drainage is going to remain the same, just a temporary ditch going on?
Right now it's a temporary ditch, I think the developer is looking to put a yard drain back there and then close that all in, and that'll be fine when it gets to, right now it's seeded temporarily and everything else, so.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Further questions for the council, the city engineer? Thank you, Mr. Mika. Service Director Dambrosio.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last council meeting, I mentioned that we were doing a sewer job on Lakewood Boulevard in front of Parker. We did complete that, we teamed up with McGee Enterprise, probably saved the city around fifteen thousand dollars, give or take. I'm doing it in-house, it's probably the biggest sewer job the city ever did. The Maple Street project, they did put the leveling course down, right now they're taking the catch spaces from the manholes, they're adjusting those to grade, they didn't complete that yet, once they do that, then we'll put the final course down. Hopefully, depending on the weather, obviously, maybe they'll get to that like this week or next week sometime. And then, I know Mayor, you were out of time, but I did have a conversation with Don Johnson also. We've received a lot of calls from the Service Department, so I called Don, just told him what was going on, there were some streets that were missed, actually that were on the side of the street that was missing, we didn't find out about it till the next day. Basically, I had the same conversation that you did, you know, you gotta kind of resolve this, get more trucks, get more guys, whatever it takes. They did say that they were behind, the same reasons they gave the mayor, and they're hoping that they're starting to get caught up now. But I did have several conversations, and.
Any questions for the council, the Service Director? Councilman Boggo.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you and Brian, they went over there, looked at, looking at your equipment and stuff and everything, gave me a good update, what needs were going to be needed in the future, so.
Thanks for coming by.
Any further questions, Councilman Bialo?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Joe, just want to thank you for the phone calls, I don't believe we were contacted many times this week, but thank you for being diligent and getting to the bottom of all those issues we had, I really appreciate you guys, I know you guys will do your best.
No problem.
So again, thanks a lot, and the residents, thank you too.
Yeah, no, no problem, call me anytime.
Any further questions for the council, the Service Director? Thank you, Mr. D. Bresner. Will the Commissioner say?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Council President, I just have one thing to add. The new water line loop that was put in, I'm sure, to Serenity, it boosted the pressure from sixty-two PSI to ninety-two. So Lakewood Water Department sent a letter to all of that area there, they're going to install an expansion tank and a regulator on each home, and no charge for that, just protect the system in there. So, that's all I have.
Any questions for the council, the bill commissioner? Councilman Jaworski.
Ray, which street specifically will be affected by this?
Johnson, Serenity, Bishop, and that whole area there.
Okay, so just that, just that loop then?
That loop and down on Bishop there, up, probably up to the end of the houses on Bishop.
Any further questions for the council, the bill commissioner? Councilman Bialo.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Ray, any timetable to?
They didn't say, they just said they would contact them and make arrangements to go from there. But I would imagine they're kind of, they have a pretty quick list, because that's pretty high pressure.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for the council, the bill commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Sayden. Recreation Director Stott.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, just a couple comments, Recreation Department, we're in full swing with our summer activities. Started the summer camp last week, we've got eighty kids participating in that, so had our movie, had our golf outing last weekend, so we're in full swing. I'd like to invite everyone to our first concert in the park tomorrow night down at the community center. The Pop Tarts will be performing, then the car show will be happening also, I think there's fifty cars that are entered into the show tomorrow, so the concert's at six-thirty, and it looks like we're going to have a good night, so, weather-wise, so I'd invite you to come on down.
That's my report. Any questions for the council, Recreation Director? Councilman Sackus.
Okay, Tim, me and Tim, we talked last week, I got contacted by a couple residents saying that they didn't believe there was enough benches at Gendra around the lap track, there are, there's four, every quarter mile, I believe it's a mile track, and one was crushed by a tree, so, you know, they're eight-hundred-dollar benches, so once the funding's there, they're going to replace that one. So me and Tim were talking, and, you know, for residents or businesses, and I just wanted to share this, that if they, they have memorial benches, and, you know, and loving memories, so those can be donated and put in the park, but they range between four and twelve-hundred dollars, and I just wanted to let that know, because these benches are expensive, and so just wanted to share that with everybody, so thank you, Tim, for looking that up, and if anybody wanted to do that, they can contact me or the Recreation Director.
Any further questions for the council, Recreation Director? Thank you, Mr. Stott. Economic Development Director Drake.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just following up with potential businesses and the panel members' meetings, and we have some more this week. I anticipate hearing about the community reinvestment area in the very near future, Willwick received their certification on May thirty-first, so we should be right behind them, ours is a little different in the fact that it is an amendment to a community reinvestment area rather than a new one, so as soon as I hear, I will let you know, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the council, another development director? Thank you, Mr. Drake. I'll allow open the floor for audience participation, if anyone would like to address with the city council, please stand, state your name and address for the Service Directors, but we do a maximum, maximum amount of time of five minutes per person. Anyone would like to address with the city council? Mr. Mayor.
My name's Mary Atten, three zero two zero one, Regent Road. I'd like to thank Chief Ice and his detectives for the arrest on Regent and Phillips. I want to let everyone know, without you contacting the police, say some, see something, say something, it was, I'll say it, it was me who saw something and said, called them and said, hey, this is what's happening, it took two years, but that's how they arrested the people at Regent, and only two months to get the guy on Phillips. So if you see drug activity, if you see anything, please let the police know, that's how they do it. You see something, say something, there's a lot of drug activity going on, so let your neighbors know, please. That's the only way they're going to get it. Mr. D. Ambrosio, there's a chuck hole at East Three Hundred and Phillips that kids are trying to fish out of, just kidding. Can you look at it one day, maybe?
I would be more than happy to.
That'd be great. And that's all I have, but thanks, Chief Ice, I really appreciate you for sharing that.
Good luck with all your comments, hard to test the girl.
Yes.
But I've mentioned too many times, the problem with drug activity is, it's not, generally speaking, it's not all the open. So it takes some time, you know, I mentioned earlier tonight that we have around thirty homes that we tip complaints on, and we have a lot of other activities going on, we have detectives that can work it, so we do work it, and oftentimes we do surveillance someplace, nothing comes of it.
Right.
We had a house, something we got to complete, Joe, and we sat at the house, another guy was arrested many times, and we just seen a drug activity, where we found part of the car, he had, just put a license over here, told his car, and cited for that. So it's a, it's a difficult task, but it was working there, we can do the best job we can, so we had some success there.
Well, with me, it was just, just sitting outside and watching, and it's like, yeah, these cars don't belong here, and just watching the movements between houses, it's like constant, constant traffic and constant contact with Joe saying, hey, Joe, so it, it worked out. So if you can just watch your neighborhood, that's all I can tell you, is if it doesn't look right, call the police, then they'll know. So thank you again.
Hello. Councilman Sackus.
Hey, and I just want to stress that sometimes people are scared to call the police, they can call one of us, and we can relay the information, and it takes time, it does, some residents get frustrated, they feel like they call and nothing happens, they just have to build up evidence, they have to make sure they put their ducks in a row, they don't want to blow, you know, whatever chance they get to get the person, so, yes, we, one at a time, we will try to make our city safer and better.
Anyone else like to address with the city council? Anyone else like to address with the city council? If not, our audience participation complete. Committee reports. The Finance Committee met on May twenty-eighth two thousand nineteen at seven PM. Purpose Sewer Rates Superfund in two thousand twenty tax budget. Present, Bialo, Boggo, Jaworski, Cass, Levon, Sackus, Soloto. Also present, city engineer, Mika, Finance Director Dolez, Mayor Barbish, Service Director Dambrosio, Recreation Director Stott. Finance Director Dolez explained to the committee that the new club has increased the rates in the city over the past few years, and our sewer fund has been drained, it will be in the red unless we increase our sewer rates for residents. If we don't have enough money in the sewer fund, we would have to subsidize the fund from our general fund. The increase from new club was nine-point-three-three percent in two thousand eighteen and nine-point-three-five so far in two thousand nineteen. This is due to the EPA mandated reinvestment in a treatment plan. Engineer for Mika provided four options for the council to consider. Mayor Barbish recommended an option where we increase the rate to twenty percent, ten percent, ten percent, five percent, five percent, three percent, and three percent over the next seven years. Councilman Jaworski asked the engineer and service director if we had a strong balance in this fund, could they complete many needed maintenance projects on our dated sewer lines? They believed they could. After some deliberation, the committee recommends to council that they authorize the law director to create legislation to increase the sewer rates, twenty percent in two thousand nineteen, fifteen percent in two thousand twenty, ten percent in two thousand twenty-one, and five percent in two thousand twenty-three. These items are reported out of committee. Finance Director Dolez presented the twenty, two thousand twenty tax budget. The committee had no objections and had recognized to council that they authorized the law director to prepare legislation for the fiscal year two thousand twenty tax budget. Council President LaSalle stated that they will have a hearing for the public at six forty-five on June twenty-fourth. The items reported out of committee, meeting adjourned at seven fifty-seven, respectfully submitted. Councilman Jaworski.
Yes, so the Legislation and Welfare Committee met on May twenty-eighth, and directly after Council President Levon's meeting, boy, I need to update these glasses, I tend to. So in attendance were Mr. Yandello, Boggo, Jaworski, Koski, Levon, Sackus, and Soloto. Also present were Mika, Dolez, Barbish, and Stott. The meeting started at seven fifty-eight. The topics were free pool, pool passes, plastic bag, potential plastic bag legislation, and the marijuana dispensary theme topic. Pool passes were first, a decision had already been made by the mayor and Director Stott, seeing as we didn't get to it in time, and actually they made some, some decisions around the fact that the pool was beginning, would need to be open. It was decided that some groups are allowed to purchase passes, like the swim team, hotter days, the city employees, they must, the employees must show a case of approval of employment, and again, that decision has already been made by the mayor and Director Stott. Things are open with that, with that new, those new regulations. The second topic was potential plastic bag ban. The mayor had originally suggested a ban, but after speaking with the business owners, decided against the recommendation. A citizen actually was there and with some, some good knowledge around the plastic industry, suggested that plastic bag drop-off at the Vineyard Church might be another outlet, because they do accept plastic bags there. I actually agreed to include this information in the next book of connections, so the residents are aware of that, that there's a place to bring their excess plastic bags, because Kimmel does not accept plastic bags in their recycling bins. The recommendation in the end was to not write an ordinance to ban plastic bags, and it was voted out of committee. And the final topic at the meeting was potential marijuana fee. The marijuana fees that are actually at the dispensary right now, so the mayor suggested removing the fifteen-thousand-dollar fee for the dispensary, mainly because no other business has charged that type of additional fee. Councilwoman Koski stated that that business did accept that, that fee at the beginning when they came to the city. I also stated that the residents probably would not appreciate removing the additional income from the city, and President, Council President Levon agreed that there's really no need to remove the fee, and businesses don't really need to fear that the business will leave the city, et cetera. Therefore, the committee voted not to recommend removal of this fifteen-thousand-dollar fee for the, for the marijuana dispensary, and it was voted out of committee, meeting was adjourned to eight-twenty-one.
Councilman Jaworski.
Improvement Committee met on May twenty-eighth as well, President Jaworski, Council President Levon, Koski, Soloto, Boggo, Yandello, Sackus, engineer for Mika, Service Director Dambrosio, Finance Director Dolez, and Recreation Director Stott. Meeting was called the order at eight-twenty-one PM. Discussion was held regarding the Colby Park tennis courts, the item was initially discussed as part of the two thousand nineteen capital improvement budget, but was put on hold to look at all the available options. The engineer provided the committee with several different options, the options included full renovation, which includes a new base and new lights, the prices range from three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for a concrete base to three thousand, three thousand, three-hundred-and-ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for an asphalt base. Other options included a one-course overlay at ninety-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and a two, a two-course overlay at one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. Both of these options would include new lights as well. Recreation Director Stott said simply resurfacing the courts would cost about twenty-thousand dollars. The committee discussed all options and decided to take no action at this time. A majority of council, a majority of committee members wanted to see how the temporary, Service Department repairs to the tennis courts hold up over the next winter season before taking any action. The item is reported out of committee, and the meeting adjourned at eight forty-three PM, respectfully submitted.
I'll make a motion to authorize the law director to create legislation to increase the sewer rate twenty percent in two thousand nineteen, fifteen percent in two thousand twenty, ten percent in two thousand twenty-one, and five percent in two thousand twenty-three. Approved by Councilman Levon, seconded by Councilman Soloto to authorize the law director to create legislation to increase the sewer rate twenty percent in two thousand nineteen, fifteen percent in two thousand twenty, ten percent in two thousand twenty-one, and five percent in two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Standby for this call or roll.
Yandello.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Soloto.
Yes.
Also, I will call for a two thousand twenty tax budget hearing at six forty-five PM here in Council Chambers on June twenty-fourth two thousand nineteen. Any commission reports? Seeing no old business, move to new business, A, Kimmel pickup garbage delays, Councilman Sackus.
Um, so, not trying to pile on with the mayor and Service Director, but kind of the same thing, just not sure if the other ward councilman has experienced, experienced residents upset about the delays, even before last week, I was getting a lot of issues that they were missing, you know, the whole side of the street on Roberts, and then I had a lot of calls where they pick up, you know, recycle container at House A and House C, but they miss B, and they're paid. So all I do is I always call the Service Director, him handling it, and so I just want to know if there's other options I could take, he's got a lot of things to worry about, but I feel like I'm always calling him on this, so I just want to know if there were any, what we can do if we have the law director looking into some of the things, I don't think that they're, you know, residents are, they ask, we should get a lower rate, it kind of doesn't work like that, we're in a contract till two thousand twenty-two, but do they have any obligation to pick up the garbage, you know, if they don't, so I, I'm kind of just letting everybody know that I'm looking into if there's something that can be done.
Councilman Soloto.
So when you get these complaints, I mean, do they come back the next day and pick up the garbage?
Some.
Because that's what, I've had that happen even personally, where those kids, they'll just miss my house, and I know that my just miss my house, and I know that my street's kind of an, you know, abnormal street, but they'll miss my house, and I'll call and say, you missed my house, and they'll say, they'll apologize profusely, and they'll show up the next morning. You know, I think, I mean, to miss a whole side of the street, that's a good deal, but yeah, I think.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you do get calls, I mean, the easiest way is to go through the service department. Typically, they will come back, a lot of times, just from my experience, I think some of these drivers, they do go through a lot of different drivers, they lose track of the routes. Sometimes they won't complete a route, and they'll send a different driver on that same route the next day, and their communication, I think, just isn't that great. But if you do get calls, I mean, the easiest way is probably just go through the service department, and they do typically come by the next day. Yeah, I think their communication needs help, and they need to just, if there's a way that they can retain some of the employees, I mean, I think they go through a lot of drivers, and they cause a lot of problems.
Councilman Jaworski.
Joe, it seems that this comes up on a far too regular basis anymore, I mean, not just what the mayor brought up earlier, but, you know, I recall prior council meetings where we heard from members talking about a street being missed, or half a street being missed, things like that. Do you guys keep any records of stuff like this? And if so, is, is there a pattern?
You know, I don't think there's a pattern as far as keeping track. We just have a log of who calls. I will say this, in January, they lost one of their heavy hitters, man.
Community of the Hall, met on April 5th. Meeting called to order, 7:00 PM. Purpose, planning commission in Lakewood Park and Rad facility. Present, Bianca Lillo, Bogo, Jaworski, Levon, Sakis, Soloto. Excuse, Casco. Also present, Barbish, Zee Lee, Fumica, Seth, Powers, and Drake. If city council approves the ordinance to send the issue to the voters and the residents' vote to repeal the refrending zoning, the planning commission had a larger role in zoning modifications in the city farm. Kathy Graff received evidence from the planning commission attending the meeting to discuss it with the committee. Mr. Graff stated that zoning criteria was created so that zoning was less politicized and to prevent spot zoning, but it became more difficult and time consuming for both potential increases and the city. He believes the commission can handle the increased responsibility. Mr. Graff confirmed to council that no zoning change can be done by a contingency basis. He also stated that a master plan would need to be created to aid the planning commission in making more decisions. Mayor Barbish stated that the creation of a master plan has been on hold until the schools figure out their plan with their properties. Engineer Fumica revealed that there is a zoning plan for Kimball Ave, which we can use as a starting point for a master plan. Councilman Bianca Lillo thinks that going from current 15 months to three months' zoning charge is a good compromise, and confirmed that any change would have to go to the planning commission for their recommendation, that the city would have to have a public hearing within 30 days, and an ordinance would have to be read in three separate meetings. Councilman Jaworski, who is council representative to the planning commission, is concerned that we will have to do a much better job of notifying the residents, especially people who are in surrounding areas, to the properties in question, and that the city doesn't do diligence. He wants to make sure residents have a voice heard. Law director Zee Lee disclosed that the protection for the residents is stated in the current ordinances. Council president reminded everyone that there is no action that needs to be taken as this meeting was informational on this. This item is this meeting is, and this item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item, this meeting is informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item on this. This item on this. Informational on this. This item is this. This item on this. This item is this.[1722.34]